Something that's a little more substantial, a little more permanent.
Yeah, just so it's a single, single person can walk through there, like they're three-foot gate. Like a three-foot gate, so you can walk in and out of the gate to the back, so they can get in, but no pass.
No pass.
Yeah. Thanks.
That motion second?
Second.
On the motion CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, no move. Further on tonight's agenda. Z seventeen twenty-one Francis Bellotti for variance, they only need the two body parcels of land held in common ownership for single-family residences using premises number one-twenty Hillside. The app good here, Representative Council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Richard Passer, twenty-four Adams Street Quincy, representing Mr. Bellotti, who is traveling tonight. When I filed the application, I didn't have full size plans yet. Captain Knopf would be easier for everybody to follow. So we have two parcels that were created in the late eighteen hundreds, obviously, in addition to the zoning ordinance. They have frontage and with through seventy-five feet. When the residence was constructed in the nineteen thirties, it was probably seventy-five feet, but when I checked the zoning records, I checked the zoning records. There's no zoning relief granted for the work that was done on the residential lot that has the residence on it. The other lot is a vacant lot, although Mr. Bellotti, when he acquired it, has some accessory buildings on it, uses it for parking. What he would like to, the lots have never been changed so far as the original plan is concerned. They're exactly what they are, but because of the fact that the zoning at some point in time went to eighty-five feet, they merged for the purposes of zoning. What he would like to do now is sell the lot separately. Nothing is going to take place on the lot that has the residence, everything, there's enough room for five cars to park and everything, so nothing's changing there. If you see in the rear of the lot, when somebody constructed it, some kind of a wall or a retaining wall, it looks like it encroached over the lot line. So the plan is to file a Form eight plan with the planning board, create a permanent easement farm, so it wouldn't change anything. No work is planned by Mr. Bellotti on the vacant property, so whoever the buyer is, would have to comply with all zoning regulations at that time. So we simply need to do variances just to be able to subdivide the lots and sell them, not subdivide them, but sell them separately. If anyone has any questions on it, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that likes speaking favor? First call?
Hi, I'm Ms. Tukka, I'm the butter of the property where it's subdivided, and I just want to say I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
Can I put your address? One sixty-one Summit, on a corner lot, and Hillside was not built. My front door would have been on Hillside next door.
Thanks. Anyone else speak in favor? Second call, third call, call up, hearing closed. You can give me another letter. I have a letter here, I'm writing in support of this application for variance, one-twenty Hillside Ave., I have been happily notified by the position regarding the plans. I have only heard from one concerned neighbor regarding potential parking issues that could arise from a separated parcel and potential development. And that's Council can. Is there anyone that wants to speak? opposed on the side? Opposed on the side, first call, second call, third call, close.
Chairman, matter of Z seventeen dash twenty-one Francis F. Bellotti for a variance appearing in the two body parcels of land held in common ownership for single-family residential use on premises number one-twenty Hillside Ave. in Quincy, I make a motion to grant variance.
Second. On the motion CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, no move. Further on it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Further on it tonight. Z seventeen twenty-two John Farrell for variance to construct a three-unit, three-story residential structure on premises number thirty-six Communal, the app good representative here.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, Christopher Harrington, my law office is at twenty-one McGrath Highway, and I represent John Farrell, also known as Sean Farrell, the owner of this property. This property is located at thirty-six Town Hill Street, just off of Copeland, up the hill from Copeland. It's a proposal for a three-unit development on a lot that exceeds ten thousand square feet of land. So this is a three-unit project by right based on the residents being zoned for this neighborhood. This project complies with all the dimensional criteria for a project in Residence B, except the FAR. So we're here for one, one variance, FAR. Point four FAR is allowed, we're proposing point five-six. The reason why the units, why the FAR is calculating to point five-six is because we've designed this to have the first floor of the building to be a two-car garage. So we have eight parking spaces for the, for the three units. So each unit, the entire first floor is a two-car garage. In Residence B, you have to count the garages in your FAR calculation. So that's what, these units are not huge units, but when you include the garages, that's what's throwing the FAR calculation over point four. This property is, has ledge in the back, it has changing topography, the topography changes from eighty-nine feet to sixty-four feet. An elevation change from the street to the back of the property, as well as ledge at the back of the property, which has to be removed in order to create the space to put in this building. So the site conditions create a financial hardship for this lot, which is why we're requesting this variance for the FAR. With me this evening is Brian Donahue, who's the architect, he designed this building. He's going to explain to you what these buildings will look like, and what his design is all about. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Brian Donahue, I'm the principal of Donahue Architects, twenty-one McGrath Highway in Quincy. The board that I have here, I'll pick the developments that Chris just presented to you. Three townhouse units on Town Hill Street, and the concept is perpendicular to the street with a single drive-in to the two-car garages underneath each unit. Towards the back of the site, we have a retaining wall, which will either be a retaining wall or ledge itself for two guest parking spaces in the back. As Chris mentioned, it's, it meets the dimensional requirements of the bylaw, and we're looking for an FAR variance which is required to be point four, and we're point five-six, which is the difference between a nineteen-hundred square foot unit including garage and a fourteen-hundred square foot unit including garage. So to meet the bylaw, we'd have less than nine-hundred square feet of living space. So having said that, we've designed these units with a point five-six FAR. They're actually quite small because obviously we're taking the garage space into consideration. The first level above that is really an open, living room, kitchen, dining area, and a half bath. And upstairs, we've got two full baths and two bedrooms, so it's a two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath building for each unit. And off the living space, we have our little porches that are second inch in the rest to the back. The total height of the, of the project from the first floor elevation is about thirty feet, which is five feet less than the requirement for, for this particular zone. And we've just tried to give the building some character and have it fit in with the neighborhood. A lot of pitch roofs, gables, siding of an determined manufacturer at this point, so. It can be a common siding of some sort.
Plaidboard?
Plaidboard. Very simple. Double hung windows, architectural shingles, very straightforward. This is the view from the face, as you're looking at the three units with the garage doors, with some dormers and bough dots and bays to give it a little bit of character. And then a bit back facing the three units that are contiguous to this. This is the elevation of the back, the stairs for the rest to get out. This would be the representation from Town Hill Street section through it, showing the garage, the living space, how it fits into the roof. So that's, in general, what the architecture of the building is, get this in with the neighborhood, it's a reasonable proposal, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And that is brick in the garage?
Well, I, I think that would more likely be a different color siding, but just try and give it a base, a middle, and a top, just so it's got a little bit of differentiation and it's not sort of a single mass of siding. I think it'll just be a coloration change.
Any questions?
I have none.
I have none.
Garbage, no room enough in the basement, self-contained, in the parking, self-contained for unit-by-unit dumpster?
Well, I think we probably do self-contained.
Yeah, the units will have individual rollout barrels that they can put out on trash day. Now, Mr. Chairman, when we designed this site, the one thing we were shooting for was to, was to build the number of units that's allowed and not seek a variance to put more units on the property than what's allowed. But also, if you notice, on the setbacks on the property, you know, the front yard setback is twenty-five feet, which is what's required. The rear setback is thirty-three feet, so the back of this building won't be terribly close to the people who live behind us on the other street. And, and our side yard setbacks are thirty feet and seventeen feet, so the minimum setback is thirteen feet, so they're even the side setbacks significantly larger than what's required. We also have Michael Joyce here this evening, he's our civil engineer, he's done a fully civil engineer site design with drainage and infiltration and all of that. If you want to hear from him, that's fine, he's here. If not, it's, it's an infiltration system that complies with everything that our city DPW has.
And that's what the DPW would make you do, right?
Yes.
And fitting the washes on, I think, we all know.
Two, two down from that. Who built the ones two down from that?
The developer named David Bowery built units right next door next.
Well, it's one, there's one house in the middle, then there's, right?
It's right next door.
Oh, yeah, right next door. Of course, well, the house there, we're ripping down, that's right.
The house in the middle is this one that's coming down.
Has there been any contact with the neighbor of the back back? No, not the back back, but the next residential house going on Town Hill. Looking at the project, it's be over to the.
John Byrne?
Yeah, Sean has, has talked to John. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, close. How response? The letter here from D. W.
Look at that, there's a need to.
Zoning Board of Appeals, Chen Sang, March seventh, two thousand seventeen, thirty-six Town Hill Street, case number Z seventeen dash twenty-two. We have reviewed the submittal for the above referenced project and the comment that follows. Drainage, modify the grade at the entrance to collect all the surface runoff to the catch basin. Two, locate the soil tests on the plan, the minimum depth of the seasonal high water table, bedrock in or impermeable layer should be two feet from the bottom of the chamber. Three, how the runoff from the roof will be connected to the infiltration system. Four, include the area drainage hydroCAD model. Five, apply for a stormwater connection permit from the Department of Public Works before construction. Six, the proposed infiltration system violates the setback requirement for the property line and building foundation. Seven, confirm which hydrologic soil group will be used, A or B. Eight, the maintenance plan shall be recorded in, at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. Water, one, perform water flow tests with the city's water department. Two, cut and cap existing water service at the connection with the mains. Three, there are some crossings on the proposed water and sewer services. Are there any measures to protect the water pipe from the contamination of proposed sewer pipes? Sewer, our record plan does not show sewer mains in front of this property, the layout of the proposed sewer service should be revised. Two, cut and cap existing sewer service at the back of sidewalk. Three, all abandoned structures should be removed or filled with dense grade and stone. General, one, install stone or concrete survey monuments to delineate the public right of way. The monuments will be set by a professional land surveyor and be installed prior to the acceptance of as-built plans. Two, confirm the house number to be used with Engineering Division, Department of Public Works. Three, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and rights of way need to be submitted along with a digital file. The as-built plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer. Further information is required, please advise.
And I have another letter, opposition here. Not the comments on each thing, I wouldn't read the full of the logs.
This is from Evelyn Bryant, three Town Hill Street. I'm against granting a variance for thirty-six Town Hill Street, Mr. Farrell, but my reasons are, the next door of butter, I think the project is too large for the property. My quality of life will change if Mr. Farrell is allowed to build a three-story structure so close to my single-family home, where I've lived for over fifty years. I cannot imagine holding my back and seeing a large three-story building so close to my home. Why Mr. Farrell needs to build a three-story building in this neighborhood? He has built one three-story building at forty-four Town Hill Street for the variance a couple of years ago. Because as far as I know, as far as I know, Mr. Farrell has never lived on this street. So why does he feel he must change this neighborhood with more three-story structures? Evelyn Bryant. It actually has pictures about the temporary power pole that's still standing. There's a little hit on kids if it falls down, hits someone.
Anyone else opposed on the side? Second call, Council, I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For the record, Jay Duka, Director of Inspector Services. As you know, the multi-unit buildings require site plan review from the planning board. The planning board looks to waive site plan review for small projects, especially those with three units. They seek out my comments when they're waiving these, and I just want to let the board know that I would be in support of waiving site plan review. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to add something, now that I know that, sixty-two Grandma Road. I don't understand about waiving site plan in this, if there's more than three units, it needs site plan review? And if they are going to prove it, I mean, that's another opportunity for the neighbors, and like, did that mean we'd not have to go to planning, Mr. Duka?
The planning board has the option of waiving site plan review, if it's a small project, it's unrequired.
I just don't like the sideways buildings, this reminds me of Cleverly Court, this is almost like, exactly like on Cleverly. And it's just squeezing them in because that's how the lot, there's a lot of lots in Quincy that are long. And again, this is back to the moratorium, I actually left Council Paul Mucci a voicemail today, saying, "Council Paul Mucci, I saw that Town Hill is on this, I realized it in the moratorium, I'm assuming you're against it. If that's not your position, give me a call back." He didn't call me back, he's not one that really calls me, let me just say that, though. So, but honestly, this is something where it's very dense, you know what I'm saying? I mean, a small project, I would be in favor of, but not this large, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Last call, call up, hearing closed.
The way it's built, I think it's, it's a nice project, that lot, that's a big lot, it was all the way back. And the way it's designed, I think it's really nice, and I know he built nice stuff, that's, I just like to. It does, does put in those other things in the architecture to the, to the building that makes it look nice and amazing, so seeing all that, I would go in favor. I think it's minimal, is what he's asking for, what he built.
The, the one they had to say is that the street is terrible shape.
Oh, street, oh.
Absolute terrible shape. I'm, I'm afraid to build this here because I'm afraid not to be able to sell that street, so that's not my decision. How are you feeling, please?
The profile on the front of the street gives us the appearance of a single-family home, which I like to see. If I was just driving downtown, because you go so slow on the street anyway. I'll be voting in favor.
Sure. Yeah, I agree, I thought it wasn't, trying to come up with the right word, I'll go, it was a very clever, attractive plan, I thought it to be. Caught my eye, long lot, lot of cushion on the sides, and I understand that the woman who wrote the letter, you know, the, the times have changed, and I get it. But I think it's been tastefully done, and I would be in favor of it.
Agreed.
Motion, please?
This is Mr. Chairman, matter of Z seventeen dash twenty-two, John J. Farrell for a variance to construct a three-unit, three-story residential structure on premises number thirty-six Town Hill Street Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
Keeping with the good items that were brought to the record.
To the record.
From D. W. Second.
On motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, no move. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you. Case numbers, Z seventeen twenty-eight Jesse Snell for variance to construct an additional, an actual living space on premises two oh one Billings Street. The app good representative here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jesse Stone, the owner of two zero one Billings Street. Basically, what I'm looking to do is I'm looking to build a twenty-seven by twenty addition to the rear of my property. The reason for that, sir, is because I was recently engaged, and the dynamic of the parking situation, which I understand is a big concern across the board. And the dynamic of the house itself is going to change with the exception of my grown family. I already have a child, he lives up in Swan, right down the road. These are the reasons why I purchased the property in the neighborhood, it's a great neighborhood. And I've explored other avenues with respect to finishing the basement, or possibly even adding a dormer. And this seems to be the most feasible way to get this done. Also, another consideration was the growing market prices in other houses, especially in Quincy, I mean, it's just, it's crazy. So, I mean, we're kind of out price, and we're just looking to build old, old living space for a family, that's all.
You get the addition just on the back of that, right?
Correct.
Now you get two stories of project.
Yes, sir. So the, the addition will be two bedrooms stacked on top of one another, with a bathroom downstairs as well, in a breezeway. So the whole reason why I'm here, gentlemen, is because I can't go over the forty percent ratio, living space and lot space. So I think I'm over by like eighty square feet. So, I mean, I can still build, but it's, so when I'm looking at that, that twenty by twenty-seven, addition is seven hundred and eighty square feet. I can go six eighty without, without having a variance.
Right. What, what are we, your pocket here?
So.
You just leave it the way it is.
I mean, I've explored putting a tandem dry wipe on the side, or I can leave it as is, I mean, I'm open for suggestions. I mean, currently, right now, the draft, the parking situation, my front yard is, is paved. So this house, when I acquired it in two thousand fifteen, I hadn't seen a single update since nineteen seventy. I literally saved the house, I renovated the whole thing, I pulled every print out of the sun. You know, so I figured this was a win for me and my family, and a win for the city and my neighbors as well, because it's going to increase their property values, and the accessories office is also going to get bigger.
Maybe we're real happy about that.
So your addition, go through the addition, what do you put in?
Just two bedrooms and a bathroom.
One up, one down?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the bath, just down?
It would be downstairs, yes, sir. Well, there's, so the, the layout on the first floor, each unit on the second floor and the first floor is approximately nine hundred square feet. The layout on the, on the first floor is, has a really, really small bathroom, hence the bathroom in the rear, and the layout is, is different from, from the upstairs. So this definitely flows better with respect to having this, you know, single family living in the downstairs. Still single family? It, no, sir, the, the house itself is a two-family, so I have a two-bedroom, one-bathroom upstairs.
I see, I see. The way it's built is.
Right, it was, it's a colonial, it was originally a, a single family back in the day, and then they converted it to a two-family. But there'll be no more, no more vehicles, you know, just, just children.
Well, there will be more vehicles, because you get two more bedrooms, and there's more people that are going to move in, right?
Well, when they turn, no, it's family, sir, when they turn.
You're going to use both units?
No, the downstairs, so both of the bedrooms will tie into my six-foot slider. I'm going to get rid of the slider.
Okay.
And tie that in to the first floor unit, which is a one-bedroom, so I'll have a three-bedroom, two-bath, seventeen hundred twenty-four.
So we have five, four kids, you move out. You're not going to live for a thousand years, so when you move out, that's what I'm saying, is the setup is, is. You're in another building, almost like in the back.
For the kids.
Make it for him.
Heard of me, made a cage, just some man built it.
I do, but, but, yeah, I got it, I know, I see what you mean. Any questions?
No, I'm outside.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, close. I have a letter here, March fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. Want to speak in favor? Yeah, okay. March fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, two oh one Billings Street, case number Z seventeen twenty-eight, we reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Anyone opposed on the side?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
I live, Dan Hammond, I live at one ninety seventh Hill Street, next door. He did a great job, like you said, the people next door, lived there, never, except for painting the outside, he never did anything. He hasn't done a thing to the outside, he's told me that he, he wants to turn the basement into a condo, to rent out. He rents out the first floor and the second floor, he doesn't even live there. He hasn't even come and talked to me. When he did move in, I put electric cords out, poles out, let the guys contract to use my bathroom. Now, I just got the notice two weeks ago, he hasn't talked to me. And I don't want a big, giant building, I don't even think he has enough space. It's too close to Michael's. I don't, I don't want it, thank you.
Thank you. Ready, Duke? You have your chance, we'll ask you if you have any questions. Is there anyone else opposed on the side? First call, second call? I have a question, you don't live in it?
Currently, not right now, sir. I, I, but it was, I did live in it, and we're, I'm moving back into it.
But you just rented it back out, right?
I'm sorry, sir?
You haven't rented it out right now?
I have it rented now, yes, sir, but I'm moving back to it, and that's going to be my house.
Why did you move out?
It was an engagement, sir, she wanted to live in, my fiancee, she's in the back room, she wanted to live in her condo for one more year before she never gets to see it. So that's why we moved out. And if, if I may, sir, I, I did speak with, with Dan's wife, and I did speak with Dan. Dan was around the shore with me, because I spoke with his wife, Bernadette, and she said she had no issues with it at the time when I spoke with him.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed on the side? Call up, hearing closed.
I think there's a better term I can come up with, I just, I don't like the way it's made, I just don't, I just think it's just so obvious.
You know, you're putting another house on the back of this house. That's what you do. Without the right, it's a square box. It's just, I mean, you've got to do this. Designing, you've got an architect, put this house back together so it's, it looks a little better than a square in the back of it. I wouldn't want to look at that front of the next door. I mean, I'll give them a chance to go redraw this if they want, but I don't know how you guys feel. But it's a box in the back. It's a house on the back of a house. It's just architecturally, it's not something that I would want to look at front of the next door. If you see the point, I mean, you look at it.
Yeah.
It's a twenty by twenty-seven block on the back of the house. Structurally, it's fine, but architecturally, it's not.
Well, I guess you could do that. The architect could be a bit of a cut in the back.
Well, if you had a plan of something designed that's going to make the house something they're going to be proud of and live in the rest of their life than just the square box in the back put on, you know? You know what I mean? Some roof lines, make it look nice, like the set of drawings you just saw. You saw something nice. And not this, you got this house and you got a square box in the back of it.
Can you have a patient interaction with the neighbor about the plan? As you finish, mine said, and what are the neighbors saying? And tell them the new gentleman appears, saw it.
And you're not going to please them. Don't think you're going to please them, but aesthetically pleasing instead of a square box on the back of the house. And it's got this indent. It's just, it's not like, it's not pleasing. It's not a pleasing piece of property. You live next door, it's either square or a wall behind the house. So, we'll talk to you in one sec. Any other comments? Want to say something?
Sir, if it's two bedrooms, how else would you draw that up outside?
Bring something aesthetically pleasing that that house adds on and it's aesthetically pleasing instead of a square in the back.
Do you have all the drawings, sir? May I show you? May I see what drawings you have? Because I have all my drawings.
Pick a date like April or something. How long would it take for you to get a different set of drawings, something?
That's it. I'm not sure. I'll have to speak with my...
Yeah, I suggest he can attend our zoning clinic with his architect and then they can get some drawings.
That'd be a good idea. Instead of just like coming out with a home and a square. I mean, people that are looking at this, they're like, well, unless they, you know, they could make it wrap around, tie into the house, make it, and it looks like a real, like it was built there, you know? They don't mind helping out anyone if they're going to stay here and live here. Whatever we can do to make them, let the neighbor store something pleasingly enough. It might cost you two more bucks, but it'll be a better car. And the property would be worth more money than it's done anything. It would be one...
When I'm home.
How long would it take you to...
Every Thursday.
Every Thursday. Every Thursday. Two o'clock.
So, bring my architect?
Sure.
It's up to you.
You can come yourself and then bring your architect the next Thursday. Get a feel for it, see what you want to do, something. I just, personally, I think we should have nice properties that we're building these additions on instead of squares. Right?
Right.
Pick a date.
Seven.
All right, what do you think, Dave? May ninth. Can I have a motion for May ninth?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Z seventeen dash two-eight. This is now for a variance to construct an addition for extra living space in premises number two oh one, Billings Street. I make a motion to adjourn the hearing until May ninth.
Second.
Motion, May second. On motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. May ninth, if you can work with Mr. Duka, he'll help you, give you a rough idea of what we're kind of looking for.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Last case on the agenda. Case number Z seventeen thirty. I'll set out for variance to erect perimeter walls on the attic floor that exist in footprint and allow the finished attic for a playroom on premises two sixty of North Central Avenue. You have the floor.
Good evening, everybody. Right. We originally have a bid impairment to build a second floor and attic addition. And not knowing, when we go back to request to build a knee wall in the attic just for extra headroom for Jan, possibly a future finished attic for a play, open floor plan for a playroom. And we realized that the basement was a little higher and we considered it as a story.
Right.
And that whole block on the even-numbered side are all have a higher basement.
Now you're up to four stories.
Yeah. So, seeking to see if we can do that where it's more...
You know what, number one, it blows my mind, it's already built. Already framed.
Yeah.
And it's a lot of work, a lot of work went into that. But really, your home right now is a four-story home. The way that's it. Because the plans that came into us were different than the plans that were committed. They were off the path of the foot.
Right.
So, that says the basement now is one story, second, third, the knee wall's four. Is that fair to the neighborhood?
Well, I have taken some pictures too that...
Oh, you can show them, sure, you can show them.
The view of, the standing of the neighborhood too.
I think what happened was you went through and they said that if you wanted, you could put on the second floor, which you've got a permanent floor. They come in a little different and they kind of let it slide for you. Says, okay, these plans are a little different, but it's only inches we're talking. That makes it another floor. Now we're talking about you have knee walls without the permit.
Well, we're willing to work it out to, you know, cut down the knee wall.
If you cut down the knee wall and bring it down to that regular two, extra story addition, I think a few inches, like we did with the other people, a few inches, not considering the story because of the way they built them up those days and a hundred years ago. I think we could all deal with that. But that four feet is really, and my three, it constitutes a four-story. And you know what? It was already done. So, now you turn around and you say, okay, what makes the next guy say, "Let's do the same thing"? You know, that roof has to be dropped down four feet and bring it back to a... And it's still rarely by law is a three-story, even though it's inches. We're talking, the basement becomes a story by like seven inches or whatever. By rights, correct.
Ah, you're correct.
Yeah. It's the minutes. So, I think everyone can say, the way it was built, that's fine. Let's give you two stories of living with your regular attic space. Just drop the, drop the ceiling back where it belongs, the roof line.
The original permit.
Original permit, which no one's going to look at the few inches to make a third floor because that was really accidental until the other drawings came in.
Can we have drawings?
You know, yeah.
Mainly because the original drawing was not correct. And when we measured at the site, we were trying to meet the thirty-four feet height of the peak. And they didn't get a clear height of in the attic area. With the quality, well, basically, my height, I have to walk down, walk in there like this.
You know what? I can't walk in my attic. Most people can't. You already have three stories there. Really, it's letting go of two and a half. Because of that, by rights, now you're doing that. You're doing the same thing as you're doing a knee wall when you put that on. Really, you're trying to make a whole floor. It's not for the people in the neighborhood, but that could still...
But the neighbors on that street have...
Probably did it a hundred years ago, though. Before we had zoning.
Well, I didn't look in how long we built, but all those have a high basement. And then the two and a, another two and a half above.
Right, half-story.
Another two and a half was the dormers, two of the odd ones.
You know what people do? People do four stories and three stories. So, if you just did yours and no one bought it, you would have had a four-story building there by rights. All right, but it happened, not by rights. You built it, no one would have bought it. But, you know, this permit, this reasoning process. We had someone put up a porch that looked totally bizarre. The guy owned his house. He built the porch. He closed it and made it final when he had his beautiful wood home. It was like, I just couldn't believe what he did. I don't even want to go there, but I'm just saying, people do things. You just can't. And there's rules and regulations. And it's how did you not know you were building knee walls and built them before you got it approved?
Well, because we were looking at the half-story definition. We thought three feet...
Who's that, though? What builder would think three feet, four feet?
Three feet, we thought is measured from the floor to the eve and not to the, where the roof line and the wall meets.
Oh, all right, I see what you mean.
Right. So, that's what the twelve inches difference there too. And after we...
You get a three-foot knee wall on your attic, you've got a decent space in the attic to move around and move stuff and do stuff. Do you have a room up there? No.
No, we're not putting a room. It's going to be open.
Then where do you need domes?
We're not finishing right now.
Where do you need domes, though?
If we, if you're going to, if we're going to have to drop the entire roof down, this is how we build, we kind of keep a safer way to drop the roof down. So, we're keeping the four-foot knee wall in the middle center side and just drop the rest of the roof down.
You know what this is, though? How can you keep any four-foot knee wall? You can't.
The four feet are basically at the dormer.
In the, in the front?
On the side. The side, just to like a, so that way it can hold the ridge while we're dropping the rest of the roof down.
What will you end up, what will you end up with? You'll have a knee wall on the outside?
On the, just a portion of the perimeter.
Will be four feet, which is wrong. Even a knee wall.
Can we just, or can we cut down entire twelve inches lower to three-feet knee wall on the perimeter?
Yeah, you can do that, right?
Yeah, there's a three-foot knee wall, then it would comply with the half story.
Right.
We can do that.
Yeah, you can be a four-foot, three-foot.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go forward with that.
Right, so you will comply and it won't be another story.
Okay, sure.
All right, so you all say with that, Mr. Duka?
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Duka, what's, thank you, what's going to be done? We all get it, right? Drop it down to three-foot knee walls, to four-foot knee walls, there won't be a story. There ain't going to be no domes going in.
But the overall height of the peak is what?
Thirty-four feet.
Thirty-four.
From the lowest grade of the building from the back, measured to the peak is thirty-four.
Right now?
Uh, yes.
So, you're just dropping that.
Uh, we're keeping the peak. Uh, well, yeah, we're, we're, we're dropping, yeah, we're dropping twelve inches. Right, we're thirty-three.
So, it'll be like twenty-nine in the front, twenty-eight, twenty-eight and a half?
The front and the back is like two feet difference.
Yeah, oh, I'm thinking four feet. Yeah, I figured what the bricks are. You're right.
And buddy, there's no, there's no domes right now?
No.
So, there'll be no domes?
No, no domes. We're just dropping that ten roof down.
And then they got three-foot knee walls?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Please, now, the progress, Mr. Duka, you're here. Well, I know, but as long as that, and then it don't come. Yeah, it's fixed.
So, the drumming is actually three foot tall?
Yeah, so it's a two-and-a-half, two-and-a-half. Is there anyone here like speak in favor? Speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. Anything? If you have anything, there's nothing. Is there anyone posing around the side? You step forward, say, "name that" just for record, please.
That is John Barrett, two thirty-five North Central. Good evening.
By nature, number four.
Just a couple, lots more observations, etc., but there was, that was a lovely house that was there. Living, we are living there going on eighteen years. It is a very nice residential, but it is undergoing a change, unfortunately, but all the way. But seeing this house starting from scratch and working seven days a week, I did make a call to the city and they stopped them working on Sundays, which was fair enough. And I noticed that house going up and up and up. And I thought it was a three-story. We just mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that it's now four stories. So, I really rest my case on that. It has to be stopped. They should adhere to the permit from day one. When I saw that they were exceeding the scope on the third of March and there was a stop of work immediately, stand on the front door, I was threatened. Because I'm glad that the city is doing a great job to watch everything that's going on in the city, no matter who is doing it.
But you need help from neighbors to make that call because sometimes you can't catch who you just can't get it back.
Well, our neighborhood is being reduced.
Right.
But in any way, I wanted to voice my opinion. I have nothing personally against these lovely people and neighbors. But the lady was, I think she, she's been in the rules or just exceeding and I think not knowing the knowledge of a permit. That's what you look at. You talk to your architect, you talk to your builder. You make sure you're not engaging both.
Builders should know. Of course they should.
Of course.
They should be in the business.
Thank you.
Should be banging a nail if they don't know what they're supposed to be banging for.
Exactly.
Thank you. But I will say one thing. We had a twelve-foot addition that was eight-foot addition and the guy builder with twelve-foot boards. And he looked us in the eye and says, "I had no idea I was banging twelve-foot boards." Can you do this for a living? He goes, "Yes, I do." I go, "What a straight face you're saying."